City of Chattahoochee Hills City Council for October 7th, 2025 to order. Let the record show that all council members are present for tonight's meeting. I'd like to remind anyone who wants to make a public comment tonight to fill out one of the comment cards that you find on the table up front, the white comment cards, and hand those into the city clerk or the city attorney. After you fill those out, if you have a cellphone, please make sure that you've got your ringer turned off. We will all point at you if your phone rings. And if you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, my nation, to God, invisible, liberty and justice for all. First item tonight is the approval of the meeting agenda. We are pulling off the presentation from the conservancy about the signs. They'll be doing that next month. Is there anything else that we need changed, Madam Clerk? All right, can I get a motion in a second, please, to approve the amended meeting agenda?
Make a motion to approve the amended meeting agenda.
I second it.
With a motion in a second, all those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
We have an approved agenda. Next up is the approval of the meeting minutes from the regular meeting of September 9th. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion second. Anybody need any changes? If not, all those ready to adopt those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Minutes stand adopted. Next up is a presentation from Ryan Jones of Malden and Jenkins about our audit.
The big turnout for an audit presentation.
Wow, we're really, really into our budget here, so.
That's great, it's usually the other way around. All right, well, thanks for having me tonight. My name is Ryan Jones. I'm a partner with Malden and Jenkins, based out of the Atlanta office. And I'm here to present the results of the fiscal '25 financial statement audit, which we recently wrapped up and provided the final deliverables to the city. So each of you should have a copy of the auditor's discussion and analysis in front of you. That's going to be the basis for most of this. I'm going to try to keep it somewhat short. But then I did want to go over a couple of financial statement highlights after we get through this document. So I'm turning over to page two. This is just a little bit about the firm. Our firm's been around for 100-plus years. I personally have not been around that long, but quite a while. And we serve more than 725 local governments in the southeast and dedicate about 156,000 hours annually to financial statement audits for governmental entities. Just want to say thank you for allowing us the opportunity to serve the city. I'm going to skip over to page four. And all of these are required communications. I'm not going to go through all of them, but they are important and we are required to provide you with this information. So if you're going through this at a later time, you have any questions, certainly let me know. Happy to answer them for you. Do you want to point out that management has responsibility for the financial statements? As part of our services, we draft the statements based on the numbers that we get from the city. But ultimately, those statements are the responsibility of management. Our responsibility is to perform an audit and develop an opinion based on the results of our audit. And I'm happy to say that our opinions for the fiscal '25 financial statements are unmodified, which is the highest level of assurance that an independent CPA firm can give on a set of financial statements. Down at the bottom, you'll see some other reporting. I'll go over this shortly, but we are required, under government auditing standards, to issue a report on our, any findings regarding internal control or compliance. And we'll get to that shortly. Moving over to page five. So during '25, during fiscal '25, the assets of the city grew by about 2.8 million. A lot of this is attributable to capital acquisitions, but some of it is increased revenue as well. Liability has actually increased from about 1.6 million to 2.1 million. The majority of that is during the year the city entered into some leasing arrangements. And under some new accounting standards, those are required to be reported as liabilities. Net position, this is essentially the city's equity. It's the residual after the assets and liabilities. That amount increased from 10 and a half million in the prior year to 12.8 million in the current year. So it's a positive change in net position, which is a good thing. And really important here is the last part of the last sentence. Six and a half million dollars, 6.4 million is unrestricted, meaning that those resources are not tied up in your capital assets and they're not restricted by outside funding sources. The city has that amount of money or had that amount of money at June 30th of '25 at its discretion. The statement of activities, this is basically the income statement for the city. Total revenues increased from about 8.1 million to 11 million in the current year. A lot of that had to do with some capital contributions, which do get recorded as revenue, even though it's not necessarily cash coming in. It's assets that were donated to the city. Total expenses of the city increased from about 6.7 million to 8.5 million. It's about a 27% increase. And most of that, you'll see increases in public works and public safety. Starting on page six, we get into just a discussion of what the footnotes in your financial statements say. I'm not going to go through all of them. I do want to point out on page seven, the very last footnote that we discuss is called accounting changes. And during the fiscal year '25, the city adopted GASB 101 for compensated absences. And basically, GASB, as they tend to do a lot, have told us that things need to be accounted for differently. So there's a component of sick leave that had to be treated a little bit differently. So the liabilities associated with that increased. Increased the city's overall liabilities, but not by very much. Again, on number eight, this tells you a little bit about the compliance report and what it is. I'll get into that shortly. On page number nine, talking about the auditor's responsibility under government auditing standards. Really, to sum it up, we design our audit to obtain reasonable, rather than absolute assurance, about the financial statements, so we have materiality thresholds. You wouldn't want us to try to get absolute assurance, because we'd be here all the time and we'd be driving people crazy. So we do have materiality thresholds and we're comfortable that our opinion, using those materiality thresholds, is adequately supported. Moving on to page 10, I do want to point out, we did not have any significant difficulties encountered during the audit. Robbie and his team did a great job of getting us the information that we needed to complete our procedures, get through the audit pretty quick. We were able to issue actually earlier this year than we did in the prior year. Audit adjustments typically, we'll see a handful of audit adjustments that we, as auditors, identify. You know, adjustments that need to be made, kind of based on what we review. There were only six entries posted during the whole time of the audit, and those were all entries that were provided to us by the city. So we actually didn't identify anything that needed to be adjusted. Didn't have any significant disagreements with management. Moving on to page 11. Uncorrected misstatements. We did not identify any discrepancies in balances compared to what we think they should be during the audit that would result in an uncorrected misstatement, so there was none of that. And I do want to highlight the fact that we are independent auditors. And you probably wouldn't want somebody who wasn't independent to issue a financial statement opinion. Moving on to page 12. There was one material weakness that we identified, and this goes back several years. And really, it's just a function of the city not having a whole lot of people involved in the finance and accounting process. So this is a repeat finding. It's been in here for several years. And really, the crux of the issue is that there's not adequate segregation of duties between the deposit, the cash deposit, check deposit, and the reconciliation process. Currently, one individual is responsible for both deposits of checks, cash, and cash paid to the city is also responsible for reconciling the city's bank accounts. So in a perfect world, those duties would be segregated. Moving on to page 13, this is another, it is an audit finding. It's considered a compliance finding, and that's just due to state law requiring that when you have a hotel motel tax rate of 8%, there's some strict rules about how that money has to be spent. I know that the city has made efforts over the past several years to kind of put the infrastructure in place to spend that money more timely and not accumulate those resources. But really, at the end of the day, that hotel motel governmental fund in your statements has a fund balance of $29,000. It's not a lot compared to the revenues that have come in from the hotel motel tax over the past several years. But unfortunately, it is in excess of our materiality threshold, so we are required to report that. And then a couple of just recommendations. These are not formal audit findings. You will not find those in the compliance report that we provided with the financial statements. The hotel motel fund is reporting about $73,000 due to the CVB and the DMO. And as of August, when we were looking at this information, that transfer had not occurred. And really, our only recommendation is that those transfers occur monthly, just so that you can prove that the money is being spent. And that'll also help a little bit, hopefully, down the road with the compliance issue regarding the hotel motel taxes. And we also recommend that the city look at using some more formal software for tracking capital assets. I think it's been manageable over the past several years, but as the city continues to grow, it's going to be more important that, it's going to be less time-consuming and more important to have some formal software in there to keep assets from being over-depreciated. And that's really it. At the back of our auditor's discussion and analysis, we talk about some new upcoming standards, which we'll work with the city on implementing. Like I said, GASB is always telling us that what we've been doing is wrong and we have to change things. So we'll help the city out through that process. Couple of highlights, moving on to the actual financial report. I do just want to point out a few items in here that indicate the financial health of the city. So if you turn to page 16 of the financial report.
16 is a balance sheet.
Good deal. So your general fund, this is a list of all of your governmental funds. Each of them have their own balance sheet. The general fund is your primary operating fund of the city. And I just want to point out, I talked about net position being the residual equity for the government-wide statements, but for these fund-level statements, it's called fund balance. And this unassigned fund balance amount of 5.8 million approximately, that represents residual equity in the general fund that is not subject to external restrictions. And so it really demonstrates that the city is in good financial health. If you do some math and you compare that number to the total expenditures that you see for the general fund on the next page of about 8 million, you have about 71.5% of annual general fund expenditures sitting in that unassigned fund balance category, meaning that in the event of a significant downturn in property tax revenues, you know, a terrible recession, something like that, you'll actually be able to get by with some of those funds. I don't want to call it a rainy day fund, it's not supposed to be that, but you can certainly dip into that in times of emergency. And you don't see that level of, you don't see that ratio in cities across Georgia very often. So that's, it's a very positive indicator for the health of the city. And that was really my presentation. Thanks, everybody, for coming.
My God.
And thanks for having me. And I'm happy to answer some questions, if anybody has any of those.
Anybody have any questions?
Looks good.
Just want to say, yes, as someone that was here when we survived through the downturn in 2008, 2009, the fund balance that we're maintaining is something that is important in the context of what's possible in a small city when a downturn happens. Appreciate your help. I know you guys camp out in here for a while. And the good news is staff never seemed upset that you're here. So everybody's working together well. And again, appreciate the help and the insight that we get from you guys. And that's it, thanks very much.
Okay, thank you.
I feel like you're disappointed you got this big crowd to play to. Next up is a presentation from the Parks Commission Chair, Diana Wilson. You know, one of the things that's happening with that fund balance, and it's on the, actually, we'll have an agenda item on it later today, is fixing the air conditioning in this room, just saying. Yeah, sorry. Huh? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are your Parks Commission, and we are here to give you an update on the exciting things that we've been working on. First, I want to introduce everyone, because there may be people in the audience that don't know all of the Parks Commission. This is Pat Lesko, Roland Alston, Brett Davidson, and Chris Jones. And I'm Diana Wilson. Two years ago, we stood here before you and said, we have an idea and we need your support. And you committed to support us. Our idea was to build a trail that could be used by everyone. Now, we have trails in almost all our parks. For example, in Cochrane Mill Park, we have 20 miles of trails. And they are used by hikers and mountain bikers and backpack riders. But they're not accessible for everybody. For people with limited mobility, people in a wheelchair, or people who need to use a walker, or people pushing a baby stroller, those trails are just not accessible. So we asked you to support us in an application for a grant to receive funds to build a trail. Our very much missed, very much loved Lake Parks Commissioner Clifford Bressard named the trail, the real beautiful, universal scenic, universal access trail. And we've gone with that name, we used that in our application, that's what we're calling it. You voted unanimously to support our application for a recreational trails program grant. And after two years, we have recently received notice that we've got that grant. It will be, thank you, $200,000 to build that trail. And we've got community support. For example, Vulcan Materials has volunteered to donate 100 tons of aggregate for the trail. Community Rickworks has volunteered to donate funds. The Art Forum at Serenby has volunteered to donate funds. Two of our Parks Commissioners, Pat Lesko and Roland Alston, are personally donating funds to make this happen. Altogether, we now have $255,000 to build that trail. So we've been doing research to determine what should the surface of the trail be. And initially, we thought, well, it should be aggregate, because it's pervious and it's less expensive. But just recently, we found out that there's a product that would be even better. It's pervious, and it's called rubber-modified asphalt. It would be smoother, which would be great for people in wheelchairs or pushing strollers. It would be softer, which would be good for people walking or running on the trail. It's more resilient, which means much easier to maintain, and it has environmental benefits. In fact, Georgia's Environmental Protection Division is offering a grant to help pay for using RMA surface material in trails. And we found out about the last minute, we had only one week to put in applications. The deadline was September 30th. But Darrell Winlet, our Parks Director, and Robbie Rockovitz, our city manager, helped us. And we got that in by the deadline. We will find out in February whether or not we receive that grant. If we do, it'll be another $235,000 to put in a paved trail. So it will be a one-mile trail through the woods in New Riverlands Park with viewing platforms high above the Chattahoochee River. You can see the concept plan right here, done by graphic designer Roland Alston. And in February, we'll find out if we get it. That brings the total to almost half a million dollars to build that trail, mostly in grant funding. And so we're very excited that this is going to happen. We're going to have our real beautiful scenic, universal design trail. And we will fulfill our promise to have a trail that's accessible to everybody. Any questions?
No, I don't know about questions. But before you sit down and before questions, I just want to point out, since we've got a room full of people tonight, if you have not been to that park, the New Riverlands Park down at the end of Hutchison Ferry and then just a little bit up Campbellton Redwine, you have to go. In the last couple of years, we have added a most amazing canoe and kayak launch ramp that has a pivoting arm that lets it go up and down with the river level so that everybody can get in and out. It's got an amazing place where you can put your canoe in, hop in, slide yourself into the water without having to get wet. It has an amazing pavilion with bathrooms, and it is gorgeous. I took some people there this morning, and they were just beside themselves that this is here. And this is just more coming into this amazing park that we already have. And again, if you haven't been, you have to go. It is absolutely stunning. And these people up here did all the work to make that happen, so. And no, and Darrell, and Darrell, and his crew, and Darrell.
Thank you.
Best-in-class happening here. Roland, show everybody back in the back where that trail's going to be. So it will go from the high ground, basically along the high ground of the whole park. And again, some really beautiful vistas as you're walking through, past the old cemetery and all of that, up and down the river. It's just absolutely beautiful, and it's, everybody can use it, totally accessible, so, just amazing. Any questions, anybody? If not, yes, please, another round of applause for these people, let's. All right, next up are our staff reports, and we'll start with the financial report from the city manager.
All right. Good evening, everyone. What are we, 78 days till Christmas, October 7th, right? We're close. I guess anybody's keeping track. I'm here for the financial report, mayor, council, staff, citizens. And you do have it in your packet, it's online, it's at all, it is every month. These are the monthly financials, and our auditor left, so I can't thank him again. I need to thank Dana Witcher, she was the direct contact between auditor. I mean, literally, every day before, during, and after the audit. She is that interaction between them, so it wouldn't have happened without our finance director, Dana Witcher. But in lieu of going through the financial report, because it's not as exciting this time of year. We don't have a lot of revenues coming, we don't have a lot of expenditures. So I wanted to touch on, like, what the auditor touched on as far as our fund balance and such, because earlier this year, we had our budget meetings, discussions, and there was a lot of talk about a lot of projects you wanted done in the city. And those projects were public works capital projects, roads projects, comprehensive plan, all those things that go into the budget that cost hundreds, hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars. So I wanted to kind of let you know where we are as far as my financial report, because since July, we started hitting hot and heavy. Darrell went out, started getting scope of services on all these projects from different contractors, and then we started getting the bids out. We have five RFPs, RFPs are request for proposal. But I'm ready to launch the sixth one right now. And we're going to have seven and eight when it comes to park fencing and one other one I can't think of right now. But these, like what the mayor talked about, it is hot in here. But in the winter, it's going to get cold, but it's not going to matter, because HVA C is coming, because Darrell put that bid out. And I am still in some of his thunder, but that's, we budgeted $60,000. It's come in at total with electrical and the award, it's going to be about $29,998. So we also, we talked about the boys bathroom, it's older bathroom here at City Hall. We have a couple bathrooms over here, we got a big crowd. And there's just one person bathrooms here, and we got another one down in the hall, but there's one in the middle, so we're going to renovate that bathroom. We budgeted money for that. I don't want to go into detail how much we budget for that, because, you know, this is public and people that bid on it might see this and such. But we're also talking about gutters and roofing, soffit, fascia, going around City Hall, because we don't want water damage, that's on the agenda. We have a flex room, I call it a flex room, but there's a hall, a room down the hall, it's kind of become our junk room by default, but we want to renovate that and repurpose it and use it. And what that use may be, we don't know, but we want to repurpose it and use it. The floors are caving in, the ceiling's kind of falling apart. But hey, the art room was able to be renovated, so we feel we can do that room. So that's in the budget. City Hall parking lot, that was part of capital, wasn't part of T-Spots, but it was part of that whole bid package, that's done. Cedar Grove Community Center renovation, that's RFP 26005. So we're going to renovate the community center, the Cedar Grove Community Center, that's another project. So we got a grant right now to redo the sign, that Chris worked on a grant, and there's a committee, Lori Searls here, I know she works on that committee as well. So there's going to be a new sign out front and such as well. And then we get into roads, capital, we got gravel roads. We always budget money for gravel roads, always, because we have 38 miles of gravel roads. So we budgeted about $150,000. The good news is, that's in capital. Anytime we go over, we have what's called L-MIG, Local Maintenance Improvement Grant. So we use that for our roads. Crossroads subdivision, that was a, that subdivision, we budgeted $1,037,000, but it was part of the RFP, it's $700,000. And that's almost done. Then we got, as part of the T-Spots, we got Watkins Road, that was 672, $672,000. That's coming in at $475,000. Sardish Road, $665,000, that's coming in at $457,000. And then we have leftover about $296,000 for additional funds for other road projects. We also want to throw in there, I got some concerns. In the one of these meetings, we were talking about T-Spots. Hey, can you stripe the bridge over Chattahoochee River? Once we get there, we can't see, there's no striping. If you ever go that way, there's no striping on the bridge. So yes, we'll get that done as part of the T-Spots project, that's part of that. And then you've got fire capital, you've heard from Greg, the storage building. We budgeted, we put $100,000 in capital for fire department and the storage building. He was able to get for $29,000. So he still have, we always like to make sure that, especially police and fire, we have at least $100,000 in there for capital. Greg may come and say, hey, ladder truck's down. You know, we got a nice ladder truck and might go down, it costs $36,000 to replace the transmission. We don't know, we put money in there for that. So I'm just saying this to say, not take too much time, I've probably gone over my time. Not that we have time, but I don't want to take too much. That all the projects we talked about, we are doing or in the process of doing, and that's what we promised the council as part of the budget. And these are several million dollars that are going to be spent this year. So the auditors are going to love us even more next year. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Robbie, any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Next up is a fire department report from Chief Brett.
Mayor, council member, and citizens. I want to preface a presentation with these remarks. In recent weeks, the fire department has responded to three different incidents involving death. Those moments can be tough to manage. So here's where genuine teamwork comes into play. Each time Chattahoochee Hills Fire and Police Departments have been carefully, effectively engaged and worked seamlessly. I tell you now that I'm proud of my firefighters and the EMS personnel, but I'm just as proud to work with the Chattahoochee Hills Police Force. It is, as Darrell Winlet has often said about the public works operations, a team-based approach that lends support at the scene and to each person, no matter their role. Recently, a car fire with a teenage death on September 24th. A head-on collision with another car firing death on September 26th. And just this weekend, a deceased person found underneath a bridge. It's a lot on the minds of police and fire and EMS. It's a lot on the minds of police and fire and EMS personnel. But together, we work through it. And this B shift that you see lined up on the wall over here, this is the crew that extricated the man on the recent accident on South Fulton Parkway, and they are also the same crew on Saturday that assisted with the recovery of the body under the bridge. Respectfully, most people cannot fathom the dynamics at such scenes. Likewise, they can't know or appreciate how important it is to work together as teammates during those long, difficult incidents. Fire, EMS, police, Public Works, and members of the administration, always working so well together. And I have seen it firsthand for nearly 12 years. We may be physically or mentally weary, but our support of each other sustains us, and for that, I am eternally grateful. In July of this year, our department responded to Cochrane Mill Park to assist locating a missing young lady. We learned this young woman had recently come under a lot of stress, and she told her family, "I can't handle it anymore." She went to Cochrane Mill Park for a long walk, intending to never return. Fire Department personnel responded as trained for search and rescue. One two-man team, Raphael White and James Luster, headed onto the Orange Trail and quickly located the young lady approximately one mile on the trail from Cochrane Mill Falls. However, this young lady was not so trusting of them. She was very distracted and kept asking Raphael and James random questions. Realizing the dynamics, Raphael and James set about to establish trust with this young lady. Their calm, patient demeanor allowed them to gain the lady's trust so she could be led back to safety. Once at the falls near the parking area in the road, the young lady suddenly diverted and went into the water chest-deep. And just as quickly, firefighter EMT White and firefighter EMT Luster entered the water after her and provided what I'll call reassuring hugs that were meant to restrain her if she attempted to drown herself. I stood on the bank, and what I witnessed next can only be described as divine intervention. Both firefighters used what they had learned about this young lady's spirituality, offering a prayer out loud. They asked her to let them be her eyes so she could close her own and walk by faith. In the next few moments, Raphael and James led the young lady out of the water, up the embankment, and into the hands of awaiting ambulance personnel. Intuitive, calm, patient, and maybe even spiritually enlightened, perhaps these two firefighter EMTs personified everything that the Hippocratic Oath and the Samaritan spirit represents to first responders. I walked away from that experience grateful for these two men and their professional yet very thoughtful approach to caring for others. And so I want to recognize them with a presentation here tonight, and I'd like to read to you what the plaque says. To Raphael White and James Luster, this is our leadership component of our service recognition program. It says, "A devoted and intuitive leader serving citizen and friend. Chattahoochee Hills Fire Rescue is fortunate you are among us. Know the way, go the way." And so Raphael, you and James, come stand up here with. I am so blessed to work with everybody in this crew, and on our whole roster. One last little piece, I would be remiss if I didn't also point out that family members arrived at Cochrane Mill Park during our search and rescue operations, and family concerns and dynamics presented some pretty difficult challenges. But Police Captain Richard Stein worked through the tension with the family and equally helped us bring the incident to a good conclusion. I have nothing but respect for you, Captain. Concerning my council report, the statistics are represented therein, they're on the table over here. And I'd like to just draw your attention to the, and highlight the part about the Cert, the Community Emergency Response Team. There are four great citizen volunteers who've taken a leadership role, and they need your help in pre-planning and recruitment ahead of natural disaster. And so I hope some of our citizens and friends will find a way to be involved. Questions, Mayor, Council?
Questions?
Thank you.
Yes.
When I think about what this city had when we started, we could barely get the Sheriff's Department to send a couple cars down here to patrol, and just the smallest of little fire departments, and where we have come, especially under the leadership of the people in those chairs up there. We have an amazing team of public safety responders, and it is one of the best things we've done as a city. Good, good people, thank you, Greg. Kevin, it's always hard to follow Greg. Police Department report from Chief Degu.
You know, I was going to say, just once, I'd like to go before Greg.
Yes.
Anyway, you have the monthly report before you on some things I wanted to touch on. Greg had mentioned the unfortunate incident about the person that we found on Woodruff. Give a quick update on that. Officers responded to the call on Woodruff to a deceased body. Called GBI to process the scene for us, not because we thought it was anything suspicious, just because we don't have the capabilities to do that. And we work with GBI quite often, and they're more than happy to come down and process the scene for us. Took the body to Fulton County Medical Examiner where they did an autopsy. There's no, as of right now, there's no official cause of death or manner of death. However, we are treating it as a suspicious death at the time. We're working to identify the person. We've, you know, called around to surrounding agencies, got a list of their missing persons report. And so, I mean, we're just starting the investigations, that's kind of where we're at. If anybody has any information, they can call Detective Martin. I put this information on our Facebook page, so his number's there, you can call him and whatnot. As far as the rest of the month of September, you know, it's been a busy month. We've, if you look at the report, especially compared to last year, you know, we didn't have any arrests last month, last year in September, and we had 11 this month. Several were traffic, some were not. Our calls for service increased significantly, our dispatch calls. And it just goes to, you know, around us is growing, traffic, through traffic is getting busier. Those that travel early in the morning can attest that traffic's getting busier on South Fulton Parkway. You know, so the officers are out there doing the best, you know, trying to keep things moving. So that's kind of where we're at.
Thanks, Kevin. Any questions?
Just congratulations to the officers issuing more traffic citations on the Parkway and so on. That's, as a commuter, that's badly.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. It's not only just the Parkway, I mean, we've, if you follow our Facebook page, we've posted, one of my officers got, he didn't get the DUI, he arrested a person for a DUI. And I think it was like on a Tuesday, you know, in the morning, you know. So, and they weren't on the Parkway, they were, you know, somewhere around. Anyway, the point is, is that it's not just the Parkway, they're going around everywhere. So, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. All right, next up is the Public Works and Parks Department report from Director Wendell.
Come on, Darryl, I like that. You know, I asked Robbie when he come back, why do I need to come up here? Everybody's reported on everything I've got. But I will make a note, if you notice and pay attention to these meetings, every department overlaps. Because he reports on what he does, he reports on what I do, and it's because we all work together every day. It's not just the police department or fire department, Public Works, we all work together. And in planning development is the same way. We touch each other every day along in our interactions. So a lot of people report on each other's stuff before I even get a chance to get up here. So I want to go over a few items that I got real quickly, I won't take a lot of time like other. So as Robbie said, HVAC unit, we're going to vote on it tonight. When you approve that, they're going to get started hopefully within the next few weeks. Hopefully, next council meeting, if it's cold, we'll have heat, if it's hot, we'll have air. As Robbie said, we came in way under budget, way under budget, because we work with the people. And if people don't know who I am and how I work here, I treat this money as it's my money. And I'm telling you, I'm tight with my money. I'm, DNG, my wife says, I could take, never mind, I ain't going to tell you what she says. But Robbie has been in meetings with me when we're getting proposals and talking back and forth, and had a, one of the contractors finally look at Robbie and says, "I'm not even going to give a price anymore." Robbie said, "Why?" He says, "Never, Darryl never pays me what I asked for. I just say, Darryl, how much you going to pay me?" And that's what we do it as. And I think, I take that as a compliment, because this is your money. And Mike Morton and I was talking today, and the decisions I make each and every day are what's best for the residents. They're not what's best for me. I listen, I hear, I know what you want, I know what you're asking of me. I'm responsible for making decisions every day for over 3,000 people. I'm responsible for spending millions of dollars of your money. And that's a lot of weight on a man to do the right thing each and every day. And, but I take it as a pride. I'm very proud and proud to be able to do that for you, because I fight for you each and every day. I want you to get what you deserve and what you pay for. Going on, crossroads subdivisions now, I had a lot of people call. You know, it's one of those things, if you don't do something, you get in trouble. If you do something, you get in trouble. So the residents are happy, a lot of shaking going on because they had to soil cement, and it takes a lot of work. But they're done with the soil cement, they're in the cure process right now. Right after the cure process, usually seven, eight days, depends on the weather, they'll come in and they'll start the paving. That's, we're close to being done within the next week or so. That project will be done. Sardest Road, they're on Sardest Road right now, doing the same thing. Hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, it will be done as well. As Robbie said, we have a RFP out, we started, posted it yesterday for the community center. That's going to be a complete renovation, bathrooms, kitchen, floors, painting, inside, outside. That's in the works. Next project will be Watkins Road, the paving. And as Robbie said, once they start, when they finish Sardest and Watkins Road and they start doing the striping, we're going to have them come over and stripe the bridge on Katz Ferry Bridge on our part of the Parkway. If you, if you notice, like Robbie said, there's several other things that we got coming up. We have, we have done a lot of projects this year, that the money that you approved, the soffit carnage is going to be done. You notice when you drive up to City Hall now, it doesn't look anything like it did 10 years ago. And I'm very proud to be part of that. And I'm thankful that the Mayor and Council has seen fit to let's spend some money on the things that we've saved money for so many years to be able to get these projects done. I'm proud of the accomplishments we've made as a team. That's all I have. If you have any questions for me, I'd be more than glad to answer them.
I do just want to point out, because we were talking about this, when they were doing the paving and crossroads, you know, that community was built in the 70s, and the mapping that was done about the water mains and all that wasn't done very well. So when they did the marking, they missed a lot of them.
Yes, they did.
And unfortunately, then, when the paving crews were coming in and doing the grinding that they do, they hit pipes that weren't marked, and that's been a big part of the delay in there is, you know, water.
It already be done.
Fix the pipes again and again, and now we know where they are, so.
True story.
Anyway, all's well that ends well, and that one is ending well.
And thank you all for letting, allowing me to represent the city as a Public Works Director.
Thank you, Darryl.
Thank you.
Mike, Community Development Report from Director Morton.
Mayor and Council, you have the building permit numbers again in front of you. 12 total permits, not a huge number, only one for a new home versus three new homes with eight total permits a year ago. Overall, traffic has been down for a while now. You can see inspections, only 121 versus 171 a year ago. Planning Commission meeting was scheduled for the 16th, a week from Thursday. We right now have nothing for the agenda. I'm anticipating that the Chair will cancel that. The Planning Commission does have actually some training this month that they'll be, that they'll be doing on another day, the following week. So that's, that's pretty exciting. And actually, we've invited participation from some of the neighboring communities that are, that are going to be there as well. So that'll be good for all of us. Finally, we have a comprehensive plan coming up. Among those various RFPs that Robbie was mentioning was an RFP for consultant team to walk us through that process, developing the comp plan. Hoping to have for next month's council meeting, consultant team for you all to approve and get started right away with putting together committees and meetings and get going. I'm hoping, I'm speaking to the crowd now, I'm hoping we'll have great participation. We want as many people participating as possible. I hope that all of you will join us and bring your neighbors. We want everybody involved in the writing of this comprehensive plan. It's got to be done by third quarter next year, a month actually from, from, I'm sorry, a year from now. And so we've got a lot of work ahead over a fairly short period of time, but excited about getting that done. That's all I had. Any questions?
The training you referred to, what, can you give us a note on what the training is?
Yeah, it's provided by the Carl Vinson Institute. It's called Planning and Zoning 101. They have a whole series of classes, and it's the first one of those. We've brought their regular, they have regularly scheduled classes, series of classes, that one of our Planning Commission members, Lori Searle, has been through, I think, the entire series. And we have brought in that trainer from the Carl Vinson Institute here to the city to do it for the entire Planning Commission. And then again, folks from Palmetto and the city of South Fulton, is that right? Anybody else, Ron? Yeah, Ron's the one that made all this happen. So we're excited about, we're excited about that, making sure that everybody has formal understanding of Georgia law and the way to go about what they're doing.
Fantastic, too, that you're bringing in the other municipalities. We've had some really good work that we did up in Campbellton, for example, with city of South Fulton, and just having those people know each other, so that there's some conversation when there are projects close to the border. We don't want that warehouse right in our backyard or whatever, you know. It's nice that they know each other, so thanks for, thanks for making that happen that way, that's really good. Anything else, any questions? All right, thanks, Mike, thanks. Next up is an economic. Economic Development Report from Chris Montesinas.
Well, it's hard for me to top those predecessors there, but I'll give it a shot. So I always say, economic development is the Department of Good News, not as good as fire and community development in some cases, but anyway. A lot of the projects that I work on are very long-term. And so I may be a little repetitive in coming back and saying, we're working on the South Fulton Comprehensive Transportation Plan. We're shoring up the scope of work on that and hope to have that finalized by the end of this month, and then we'll bring it back to the City Council for ratification in November. And Darryl is correct in that our departments are very overlapping. I work a lot with community development, work a lot. I work a lot with community development, work a lot with parks, of course. Um, but working recently on the RFP for the real beautiful Universal Axash Trail Gaming, uh, bring it up over and over. Had a little bit of a, of a pushback because of the grant that, uh, was mentioned that they've, that the commission has applied for to change the, uh, the surface material. Um, not, not a big deal. Just means that we're pushing our, um, RFP out into probably, uh, March of next year. Um, also, uh, let me also express the good news of, you know, the boot cart rezoning, um, that added 10 miles of additional trails to the, uh, the city network. Uh, also included 200 acres for farm use for the Chatham Conservancy. Um, as well, uh, we've got, uh, the addition of roughly 77 acres of new land that are going to be going along with the Campbellton Park. And also across the river, there have been additional acquisitions by the Treasure Republic Land, the Doug River Reservoir for, uh, some extended, uh, trail and park, park space. For grants equity, um, we're working on, um, the Georgia Academic Place Making Collaborative. We just came back from a workshop of Ron and Community Development and I were attending with, uh, one of our community team members. Um, and we were very, very proud representing Chattahoochee Hills. Uh, Ron and I were reflecting that, um, we are, we feel very privileged to work for Chattahoochee Hills because it is such a unique experience, a unique experiment, uh, in its land use and its conservation approaches. And that's something I think professionally that we've never really gotten to experience. So we're, we're, we're very, uh, complimenting of that. Um, we, let's see, I attended the Georgia Governors Tourism Conference a couple of weeks ago. That was a good experience. Got some good, good information to bring back. I'm waiting for some of the, uh, presenter slides so I can put together a, uh, a, a, a final report on that. Um, for community engagement recognition, I do want to recognize not only members of our Parks Commission, but also the Chattahoochee Riverkeeper who recently had a Sweep the Hooch event where they collected, uh, trash that tends to accumulate during high water events of Chattahoochee. It's an ongoing battle. Uh, we're also looking at potentially, uh, some additional grants for some trash traps, as they're called, which we may see if there's a way that we can integrate those into our, into our riverlands. Other than that, I think that's roughly about it. Doing quite a bit of work with the Convention and Visitors Bureau on the website especially. Um, and also multimedia and those things are really starting to gel together. So we're really, really excited about that. And, uh, that's about it.
Hey Chris, can you share about the new sign that we are planning to put out?
Yes, pleasure you mention that. So I mentioned the Georgia Academic Place Making Collaborative and, uh, Robbie stole my thunder a little bit. Um, and, uh, okay, so we had a project which is called lighter, quicker, cheaper project for the program. And now we have the one project, we actually had four. And they were inadvertently things that were done around us, but really, really contributed to place making. Number one was the banners up in Del Rio. I mean, that really is part of this, the place making, um, visualization. We had, um, the, uh, let's see, uh, skipping all four. Uh, we, we did have the sign as Cedar Grove that we decided to go with, um, incorporating the bar quilt theme so that we have one more installation that kind of brings a little bit extra cohesion to place making the city. That was our actually LCQ project. Uh, we also had the, as, as mentioned in the last council meeting, the, the branded farm signs, which also add to place making as well. There was a, a fourth one that slipped my mind, but, uh, it's all. Oh yeah, yes, yes. We had the citywide photo contest, which actually was, believe it or not, um, the Bayer's brainchild inadvertently spawned this because he asked me about six months ago if we had a map that showed scenic views. And I said, no, but we need one, you know, for the standpoint of, if we're going to attract artists from outside the community and say, hey, we've already, we've already got places for you to check out. You know, I think it's good. So, uh, that led to the, um, engagement of the public at large. And we put, we worked with the Chattahoochee Hills Conservancy and came up with the citywide photo contest, which ended on the first of September. And my ulterior motive was also that we're building a multimedia library. So anything that was actually submitted would be the, the property of the city and of the Chattahoochee Hill County Conservancy. So we had 78 submittals in three categories and the, um, winners will be, will be announced at the, um, the Fall Festival in October.
November the 8th.
November 8th. Thank you very much. So.
Come sing happy birthday to me.
There you go. Any questions?
Thank you.
That's it. Thanks so much, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Are those photos online? Oh yeah, because they're awesome and they should be online soon. Um. All right, sorry. I, I won't. Next item on the agenda is public comment, which is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide their input and their opinions on any matter not scheduled for its own public hearing during tonight's meeting. We don't have any public hearings, so this is all you. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone directly to the council. State your name and address for the record. You're allowed three minutes for your personal remarks. Uh, I see a big old pile, so I'm not gonna ask if there are any. I'm just gonna ask that people please be kind. Uh, and, uh, Rick?
Uh, first up, Richard Schmidt. That's me. My name is Richard Schmidt. 5065 River Lake Drive, Irving, Hills. I'm here tonight. I want to start out by saying, first of all, uh, serving here has been fun, wonderful, and I continue to serve. My actions that I had disappointed a lot of people and I understand that. People that know me know that's not me. I disappointed my family. I disappointed my community. I said some things that were hurtful and I probably disappointed some citizens. And I understand that. I do apologize for that. Um, I make no defense of that. I know that, uh, as being a God fearing man, you gotta own it. And that is the mistake I made. I do apologize. Sometimes we let emotions get the best of us. We all live in glass houses. And I hope that, uh, you know, I, I will say this, at the end of the day, I do appreciate a lot of the people, a lot of the comments, a lot of the things that people have shared with me. Instances where they have, you know, done kind of the same thing, stuck their foot in the mouth and it is what it is. Um, I will say that was horrible, but of those people out there that know me, know that's not me. And, um, I do apologize and moving forward, um, if you'd like to speak to me about it, please feel free to. Thank you. Next, Mitchell Wolf.
He and I was about the same height, I think.
Uh, Mitchell Wolf, 11355 Seren V Lane. Ethics is not optional. It's the price of public trust. Thank you, Mayor and Council members for your service to our community. We know you care about the future of Chattahoochee Hills and the unique environment that makes this place so special. We are here once again because the very values upon which our city was founded, a pledge to preserve our landscape is facing significant pressure. As developers move to develop with impunity, this council dawdles and delays the need for enacting a protective ethics ordinance. We are proud of our commitment to preserve the rural character of landscape. And occasionally we understand and appreciate worthwhile sermons on biophilia or starting conservation in our own backyard. But our reputation is not just a marketing tool. It's a promise to our citizens. A lack of ethical oversight now will tarnish that reputation forever and the very foundation of Chattahoochee Hills will be lost. Incidentally, the greatest risk to developers is the potential loss of our reputation. Without our reputation, their land is like any other. It loses its luster and developers lose financially. And yet, as history tells us, it will be those same developers who will cost us our reputation. And in an ironic twist, our loss will become their nightmare as nothing upends a real estate development than a solid reputation. Those days are coming, changes on our doorstep. Bad things can happen to good people. While you fiddle and diddle and clutch your pearls, you are failing your civic duty to protect the city with an ethics ordinance. When, not if, we encounter serious problems, we will have no mechanism to assess, address, or resolve the issues. As is often said, this will make us a city like no other. Real cities, strong cities, responsible cities, all have a robust ethical ordinance. You should be preparing our city for the troubles ahead. Unethical behavior, oftentimes criminal, is par for the course with all matters of real estate, especially zoning and permitting. The time has passed for turning a deaf ear to an ethics ordinance. Trust me, you need to take decisive action. Stop wasting time. Do your job. Every day that passes without an ethics ordinance is another day risk losing the very soul of Chattahoochee Hills. As one campaign slogan says, planning not fear, but planning without action is far worse. It's terrifying. Thank you.
Next, Steve Maple.
Good evening, Mayor Reeden, members of the city council. My name is Steve Maple and I live at 8130 Cockram Mill Road, here in the beautiful city Chattahoochee Hills, Georgia. I had the privilege to talk to you a month ago and I talked about why I love Chattahoochee Hills. Well, there's been a lot of talk lately about what it means to say, we love Chattahoochee Hills. So tonight I want to talk about this love, not as a slogan, but as a reflection of who we really are as a community. I love that our community rejects threats of violence. I love that when our neighbors Judy Walker and Tiffany Towns are targeted by an elected official, people here don't look the other way. We stand up. We show up. We speak up. I love that hundreds of people in our town have come together over the past few days, hundreds of people. Neighbors from every corner of Chattahoochee Hills to say with one clear, united voice, we will not tolerate intimidation or retaliation from anyone who holds public office. I love that our residents understand that democracy is not just about power. It's about character. It's about integrity. It's about decency. And I love that we live in a place where love and courage walk hand in hand. Where if an elected official forgets what public service means, we have the power and the right to vote them out of office. Because loving Chattahoochee Hills isn't just about the beauty of this land. It's about the strength of our people. It's about neighbors who look out for one another, defend one another, and protect the values that make this city worth loving. That's what it means when we say, we love Chattahoochee Hills. Thank you.
Next, next, Denise Crawford.
I'm not quite that tall. I'm sorry. Denise Crawford, 5575 Cockram Mill Road. Um, as the president of Chattahoochee Citizens Alliance, I need to announce tonight that I've, we've gotten in contact with the League of Women's Voters, um, Fulton County, and they are doing a candidate forum this Sunday, October the 12th at 3 o'clock PM here at City Hall. But my question is, um, Chief Brett, what is the maximum number of, of people that can attend? 120, okay. Because they just sent me the flyer when I was driving here and it has a reservation link on it. So I'm gonna try to get it to the city tomorrow or tonight. I'll, I'll email it to you. Um, so that possibly you can put it up on the website, um, so that you can make your reservation, okay? Um, I'm sorry that it's taken this long. It's been phone tag, phone tag. But, um, anyway, um, I'd also like to speak on ethics tonight also. What do we make from an organization without a moral compass and an unwillingness to embrace ethical standards to maintain social order? And what do we make of an organization unwilling to do the hard work of implementing an ethic standard and instead wants to short shrift the process with a mere pledge of civility? It reminds me of the cartoon where Moses walks down the mountain without the Ten Commandments, saying, they were all too hard. We're going to just use the Cliff Notes instead. But of course, having an ethics policy requires serious work. And as we have been informed by council, it's often difficult to establish and follow the various processes, policies, and procedures to enforce ethical standards. Just another reason not to do it. Instead, we entertain a pledge of civility, a nod to keep it neighborly, which has no process for enforcement, no avenue to assess, address, or resolve ethic disputes. It's just a feel-good device to instead insist on decorum, all the while avoiding the hard work of civic duty, abiding by our public oaths of, or addressing problems head on. It's a puff piece distracting the council from its true purpose of oversight and preserving the status quo so that developers can run roughshod over its citizens. Thank you.
Next, Lori Searle.
I'm Lori Searle. I live at 12600 Whiteside Road. This has been kind of emotional tonight. What I have to say isn't pleasant and coming after Chief Brett i- is just difficult. Council, thank you for reconsidering the ethics ordinance. As you may recall, the council considered this option back in 2020 or 2021. The council had concerns that an ethic ordinance might be abused by people filing the complaints. I noticed in today's work session packet, Council Member Lowe brought up this concern and asked for examples which Council Member Likesy just chose not to research at this time. Given the recent recordings of Council Member Schmidt, there are now hundreds of examples that show many residents would disregard ethical transgressions when they politically support the alleged violator. To assist the council, I have compiled a document with many of these examples, which I will email to you tonight. I hope that you will generate strong support for your decision about using an independent intake body and board outside of the city and county at residents. As for the Schmidt recordings, I want you to understand, this was not a one-time instance of a harmless angry rant. In fact, there are now enough victims of Schmidt's rant and rage and threats that we can start a Me Too movement. The newest Me Too is Judy Walker, who by doing her job extended an invitation to all candidates to submit a questionnaire response for the newsletter. She became the latest target of Schmidt's threat. Through the AJC story, which I'll leave here tonight, about Schmidt, I also learned that Council Member Rodney Peak became a member of the Me Too movement. When the city manager heard Schmidt make threats about Peak, he wisely cho- chose to record future calls with Schmidt. I am also a member of the Me Too movement. While during my council term from 2020 to 2023rd, I received verbal abuse from Schmidt. verbal abuse from Schmidt and at least one threat overheard by city staff, I will be glad to submit that as my testimony to the investigation. While the council has done its best at the time not to agonize Schmidt and to consider options to prevent such outbursts, the end result is that Schmidt created a difficult working relationship, which negatively impacted the council, staff, and citizens. I share this story now with you to let you know this unprofessional behavior seems to be a character trait, and no amount of apology will ensure it doesn't happen again. I do not accept your apology. I thank the city staff for addressing the issue and initiation process.
That's it. Next, Martha Hall. Martha Hall. All right. Next, Deandra Graham. Ms. Graham not here.
No, she's coming.
I need y'all to know this room is not fifty-year-old woman friendly.
No, I'm sorry.
I got my manual cooling apparatus. You know, came here.
Please state your name.
I'm sorry.
And address.
How y'all doing? My name is Deandra Graham, and I live at forty-six fifteen Dipter Lane. I gotta think about that sometime. I followed the Marine around a long time, and you never know where you live. But anyway, I came here with, tonight, I'm from St. Louis. I came here tonight with, I'm from Missouri, and you gotta show me. But in the course, like she said a little while ago, throughout the course of this thing, it has been a bit emotional. Councilmember Schmidt, the first thing I want to say to you is, thank you for coming. I didn't think you were gonna come. I thought you started a fight and you was gonna fake COVID or something tonight. I'm just gonna be honest with you. Now, I don't know.
Talk about it.
But I'm just telling you that's what I thought. Then I heard other people speaking, and you can't be around somebody like the fire chief and it don't rub off. Now, just as unorthodox as a council member getting up to give comments, I'm gonna do something a little bit unorthodox. And I'm gonna ask you a question. As, you know, how I was raised was, even if your guy or girl doesn't win the election, you get behind whoever wins when it's over. As a black woman, Gen X, based on what you said, how do I have faith in you if you win mayor?
I can't answer you at this point, but I would be because of the format that we're in, but I would be glad to, after the meeting, speak with you.
If you can speak and give comment, you can answer my question.
Yes, and public comment.
Can't.
No, I can't. It's just the way the government's set up, but I have no problem addressing you after the meeting.
Okay, cuz I'm gonna say this. A lot of people thinking it in the room, and I tend to be one of them people that say what folks is thinking. It just feels like to me, you don't like women. And I mean any women.
Don't like what? I couldn't understand you.
Women.
I'm married.
Say you were gay. I'm just saying you don't tend to like women. I didn't, I didn't say you were gay, but you handled it with your women, huh? You know, but, you know, good luck, T.
It's okay. I love how that.
Oh, I got thirty-five seconds. I wanna use them all, too. You ain't gonna run me off. What I wanna tell you is this, you, you can, you can, you can give, you can bring a basket, and it can be empty. My daddy got a saying, and he said, when people got a whole lot to do and say, that mean their wagon is empty and you need to load their wagon down. But my mama have a statement that she says a lot, and they from Tifton. You came here and you put on some tall boots, and so it showed you was ready. We need you to do the work.
Next, Tiffany Towns.
In the words of Councilman Schmidt.
Ms. Towns, please state your name and address for the.
I'm getting ready to. That be Tiffany Towns. And here I am running that mouth again. I live at three-four-six Lowbrook Court in the estates at Cedar Grove. I hesitated to give my address tonight because frankly, the depth of the vitriol and violent rhetoric being directed my way is unsettling. And though I am being cautious and prudent, I am definitely not going to be intimidated by the likes of Richie Smith. Unlike many people in this town, I'm not afraid of you, sir. But I need to say this, with the failure of Chief Degoo to redirect Sergeant Wood and taking a call from his in-law and failing to question what Schmidt meant by I'm going to make her famous in reference to me on a body cam video, and with no one from City Hall reaching out to tell me that Schmidt was fixated on me and not one, but two recordings that had nothing to do with me, and now Councilman Licey dismissing violent language and potential threats as locker room bruster from his official city email, I need the city of Chattahoochee Hills to know that you are liable and you are responsible for the actions that may result from this violent rhetoric because you failed, as Richie says, to get that dog under control. Should any harm come to me, my property, or my neighborhood from the keep it rule contingent, me and/or my family will bankrupt this city to hold you all accountable. The City Charter, Section one dot oh-three-nine-B, the city shall adopt ethics ordinances and regulations governing the conduct of municipal elected officials, appointed officials, and employees, establishing procedures for ethics complaints, and setting forth penalties for violations. In nearly twenty years, no ethic laws are on the books in Chattahoochee Hills, and given his poor judgment, Licey shouldn't lead this work. He shouldn't. I never called Richie names. I didn't act belligerently at his town hall, but because I dared show my dissatisfaction with his job performance, that's accountability, bringing receipts, Schmidt thinks it's okay to threaten me and call me derogatory names to city staff. After listening at how he spoke about all the citizens of Chat Hills who can go F themselves if we don't vote for him, I've had enough of the Schmidt show. I've had enough. I don't respect Richie. I don't want him associated with Chattahoochee Hills government in any way. He is at best an embarrassment. You're an embarrassment, and at worst, you're dangerous. And I don't know you, so I can't tell. Either way, he is not a mayor. He's not a mayor. He is a menace. He is a menace, and I am looking forward to turning the page on him after the November fourth election. He can ride off into the sunset on the beaches of Florida and leave the rest of us in peace. I can't believe you all have put up with this for fifteen years and that people are coming and recounting their experiences. You need to get this in order. The civility code is a start. Ethic ordinances are the end, not Scott Licey leading that work.
Next. Next, Peggy Whitaker.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council, my name is Peggy Whitaker, and I live on Serenby Lane in Chat Hills. I'm here tonight to speak in support of my friend and neighbor Judy Walker and for all the women who have been threatened and bullied by a member of our city council. Threatening and bullying language has become all too commonplace in recent political discourse in this country. We, the people of Chat Hills, find that kind of language unacceptable. It must stop. We love Chat Hills, and we love those who are working to make it an even better place. Policy can and does change. Character does not. Thank you.
Next, next, Tammy Brooks.
Good evening, Mayor Reed and members of the City Council. My name is Tammy Brooks, and my husband and I reside in at two-two-five Capina Court, and we've been there for the last almost five years. Thank you for your time and your attention this evening. I stand before you not to take a political stance, but to appeal to something much deeper, our shared humanity. Recently, remarks were made by a city council member that were both disparaging and threatening. Regardless of our differences, we all know that words matter. They run, they can either heal or harm, uplift or tear down. My faith teaches me that our speech should be seasoned with love, kindness, respect, especially when it's hardest to do so. Leadership demands more than authority. It calls for empathy, restraint, and respect. And public service should be a commitment to serve with compassion, fairness, and humility. Every person in this community deserves to feel seen, heard, and safe. So while my words may not reach every heart tonight, I speak them anyway because silence is the face of disrespect, and it benefits no one. I close tonight with this thought. True leadership is measured by character, not by position. And so I urge you to strive to do better and be better. Thank you for your time and for your service to our community.
Next, Don Reed.
My name is John Reed, and I'm at eight-three-nine-zero Hern Road with my wife Karen Flanders Reed and my three children. I've been there for fifteen years, and so I'm right in the middle. I'm not an old timer, but I'm also not a new guy. I've been around for a while. And I put my name into comment for one simple reason. I made a judgment that there may need to be some comments having to do with healing, and there may be some comments that are necessary to get us back on track as a, as a council body to not only talk about the past and progress we've made, but to talk about the future and the progress that surely will come our way in the future, and the fact that we have no choice but to face the future because the future of Atlanta is coming our way, and if we don't do something, we're going to be in trouble. I think that I will not try to accomplish anything other than to make those remarks because I think this council meeting is doing just what it should be doing.
Next, Jeff Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jeff Smith, and I live at five-fifteen Augusta Lane here in Chat Hills. My wife Lisa, my son Kyle, and I have lived in big cities, small towns, and on a farm. We spent many years in Dallas, Texas, then built a homestead from scratch in East Texas. Thirty-eight acres of pasture barns and a few hundred farm animals. Every morning, Lisa and I milked our cow Clarabelle. It taught us what hard work, community, and stewardship really mean. We came to Chat Hills because this place reflects the best of both. Both worlds, the creativity and the diversity of city life, and the closeness and shared values of a small rural community. I lived in suburban Houston, Texas, where developers cut down the trees and named the streets after them. Saddest example of urban sprawl and no zoning. I lived in Forschkoten, a small European hamlet where people walked to the bakery, know every neighbor, and value both the land and each other. Those experiences have shown me how fragile a community's character can be when growth and development aren't guided by thoughtful leadership. The balance between rural land, working farms, and small gathering places, that's the soul of a town like this one. Once lost, it's hard to rebuild. Our parents, aunts, uncles, and grandparents picked cotton and watermelons during the Depression in Texas and Mississippi. They followed leaders like Franklin D. Roosevelt, who helped people believe again, not by shouting or dividing, but by speaking to the nation's better nature. That's what real leadership is. It isn't about power, it's about character, what you do when nobody's looking. The best leaders lead with calm and compassion. They listen before they act. They don't raise their voices to win an argument, and they don't use fear and anger to control people. You see, you see it in small-town mayors, the ones who show compassion, who listen, who mediate differences, and who build consensus to move their communities forward. That's the kind of leadership our democracy, democracy needs and the kind that communities like ours depend on as we grow. We don't need warriors to win battles inside our towns. We need mediators, bridge builders, people who can disagree without hating. When elections end, leadership begins, and it belongs to those who represent everyone. The rest of us then have a duty to help, not hinder, to speak with respect, not resentment. To the young people here tonight, please don't mistake anger for strength. True strength is calm under pressure, fairness in conflict, and kindness when it's hardest. True leaders answer our questions and explain their positions honestly. Voters have a choice, and to make that choice, voters need to be informed. Here in Chat Hills, we've shown time and again that we can come together to build, to volunteer, to lift one another after storms or loss. That's who we are. We deserve leaders who reflect that same spirit every day. Thank you for listening, and thank you to this council for your service to all of us.
Mr. Mayor, before I call the next person, I'm gonna need to speak with Angela Addison just for a second outside. And while I'm talking with her, the next person is Amy O'Brien.
Amy here.
Amy O'Brien.
Yeah, that's fine. Just one second, Amy.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, go ahead.
So first, I want to preface why I'm here. I'm not here to speak to the current conflict in our city. I'm here to speak to something that I brought to the attention of this council and people in this room on April first of two thousand twenty-five. And I want to submit this, my comments, and the cover of those approved.
Your name?
Oh, my name is Amy O'Brien, as they said, and I live at ten-seven-twenty Serenby Lane, and I'm a ten-year resident. And I'd like to submit the approved minutes from that meeting of April, Tuesday, April first, two thousand twenty-five, to the record. On that fateful night back April, I stood here and asked this city council to take governance seriously, not selectively and not politically, but responsibly. I spoke about the lack of safety controls and the absence of accountability within our HOA and the growing number of hazards on our private streets. I said then that someone was going to get hurt. That concern wasn't an abso- That concern wasn't an abstract. In that December, this past year, my own family experienced an accident at one of those blind intersections in Saranby. A child ran out from a hidden doorway and was struck by my son and my daughter-in-law. The child bounced off the car and suffered a split lip. A police incident report was made. Thankfully, the child was okay. It was a terrifying experience for all of us involved. Months later, there has been no meaningful change. And since then, another tragedy quietly has occurred in Saranby. A friend, a neighbor, has lost her beloved dog Pearl in a heartbreaking accident on one of those unsafe roads. Out of respect for everybody involved, I only say this: It was preventable. That family had pleaded for speed bumps, signage, and attention to traffic concerns. Their pleas were unanswered or ignored, and this loss became the final straw. They are now selling their home and they are leaving the community, just like others. These are not isolated moments. We continue to face drainage problems, unnecessary tree removals, bailing sewers, symptoms of deeper failure to listen and lead. Tonight, while this room is filled with tension and political noise, I ask that we not lose sight of what truly matters: people, not power. When residents beg for safety, when truth is buried beneath influence, and when leadership fails to protect those it serves, we all lose. So I stand here again, asking what I asked in April. Find your courage. Govern with integrity. Put people before politics.
Thank you.
Because we can't undo what's already happened. The accidents, the loss, the heartbreak.
Ma'am, three minutes is up. That's it for everybody. Thank you. You can give that, we'll put that in. Next, Jenny Mathis.
Hello, my name is Jenny Mathis and I live on Loop-O-Loop in Chat Hills. I'd like to take a moment to describe the facts as I understand them. In June, city council representatives Richie Schmidt and Rodney Peak met regarding a resolution made by Peak at a previous city council meeting that Schmidt did not like, where Schmidt threatened to quote, "Put my fist through your teeth." After that incident, it appears our city manager decided to start recording his conversations with Councilman Schmidt. And thank goodness he did, because now we all know that this was not an isolated incident, but a pattern of violent threats. Once the city manager had a recording of an elected official making threats of violence toward a citizen, he had a legal and moral obligation to notify the police chief, the city attorney, and the person being threatened, which he did. Imagine if he hadn't notified Judy, a contracted employee of the city. He did what a responsible public servant should do. Once Judy and others knew, of course it was appropriate that a neighbor submitted an open records request for the recording. It's beyond ridiculous to dismiss this as dirty tricks, and it's wrong for anyone, including Councilmember Lightsey, in his letter yesterday, to do that. This was a neighbor standing up for a neighbor. Frankly, Councilman Lightsey, you should be ashamed of yourself for minimizing this by calling it locker room bluster. I don't know, I don't know what kind of locker rooms you've been in, but no decent person excuses a man who says about a 70-year-old woman, "If she stands up to me again like that bitch she is, I will physically tear her feet off for her because I'm that type of guy." Is language like this so routine for you in your circles that you can easily dismiss it as non-threatening? Well, that may be the case for you, but I can assure you, there are many people, women especially, who do not have that luxury. And I cannot begin to comprehend how you think a black woman could hear threatening language like this with references to ropes around necks without seeing any threat of violence. It is unimaginable. It is unimaginable, it's despicable, and by minimizing it, you are fully complicit. I am saddened by this behavior and I'm furious. The people of this city deserve better than to have their public officials create a culture of fear among their own constituents with violent threats. Thank you.
Next. I hope I get this right. It's either Colin or Kalen DeMude. Damon? Well, I've rated penmanship before, better than mine, but I'm gonna give you a B minus.
My penmanship is much worse than your reading. Good evening, everyone. My name is Colin DeMude. I live on Saranby Lane, also known as the spell of verse. I want to speak tonight about Councilman Richie Schmidt's recent remarks, not unlike a lot of other people tonight, comments that were threatening, intimidating, and deeply disrespectful towards people in this community, myself included, as you generalized everyone from Saranby, even though you sat in my kitchen and lied to me and told me you didn't do that. Now, I know Mr. Schmidt has apologized, and I acknowledge that. We all say things we regret sometimes. It's part of being human, right? But when you hold public office, the standard is higher. Words carry weight. An elected official represents everyone, not just their supporters, not just one part of town. And let's be clear, this was clearly not a one-off situation. These kinds of comments and attitudes have come up more than once. In fact, we're learning tonight multiple times. That makes it even more concerning. It's a pattern that damages trust and undermines confidence in leadership. Threats or insults towards neighbors are not locker room talk, Councilman Lightsey. We're hearing that repeatedly. They're not private jokes, they're a reflection of judgment, temperament, and respect, or the lack of it. This is not a smear campaign. If you're bothered more by the fact that he got caught than you are by his behavior, then you're part of the problem. I'm very proud that we're a small, close-knit community, and we have real differences of opinion about growth, zoning, and the future of Chat Hills. And that's okay. Healthy disagreement is part of democracy. But when those disagreements turn into intimidation or personal attacks, something bigger breaks: trust. That trust is what holds this community together, between rural and developed areas, old residents and new ones, city leaders and citizens. Everyone who chose to live here, whether in Saranby, on a farm, or along one of our beautiful country roads and the way of life it offers, we all want to prove that. It boggles my mind that we're fighting over this. And we can with the development that benefits one.
Dealt with men like him before. How many have been told, "He's just blowing off steam," or maybe, "You pushed him too far"? How many have been told, even by other women, that this is just how some men are? And it doesn't mean anything. Well, neighbors, it does mean something. This kind of behavior has no place in our home, and certainly not in Chattahoochee Hills government. I want you all to look around this room. Fifty percent of us are women. Women who lead, volunteer, and advocate for what's best for all of us. But even when one of them is intimidated into silence, we all lose. That is not democracy, and this is not leadership. Leadership is not about threatening people into submission. It's about earning trust, listening, and leading with humility. I believe you should step down from this race. But if you can't do the right thing... When we all vote, ask yourself, who can disagree without raising their voice? Who can lead without using fear? Who will make sure every resident, especially women, are safe to speak their truth? Chattahoochee Hills is stronger than this, and we deserve better.
Next. Next, Renee Prince. Next, Maria Hansen.
Hello, mayor and council. I'm Maria Hansen. I live at 8135 Atlanta Noonan Road. Like many in our community, I am deeply alarmed by the language and threats recently caught on tape from a candidate for mayor. I find it hard to imagine that this was the first time in his 14 years on council that he's talked this way at or about others. It's part of a pattern of arrogance and entitlement that reflects poorly on our community and the respect we owe one another. I have heard from many neighbors who are concerned about what this says about how we treat one another and how we present ourselves as a city. We need to think carefully about the kind of representation we project, not only inside City Hall, but also in meetings with city partners, with our staff, and to our neighboring municipalities. If we normalize this kind of bombastic and inflammatory language, we risk damaging both our reputation and our relationships. We've all seen news stories about other cities plagued by poor leadership, like poor South Fulton's mayor, whose questionable use of taxpayer funds and erratic behavior have left his city's image tarnished. That is not what I want for our town. In the early days of our city, we endured the tragic police shooting of a lieutenant vote. Our community was thrust into the public eye, and our leaders had to speak for us during a difficult and emotional time. In moments like that, whether tragedy or celebration, we need leadership with empathy, reason, and respect. I am not convinced someone who can so easily threaten and demean others could represent our city with dignity in such moments. That concerns me greatly, and I urge us to consider carefully who we want at the front, speaking for all of us when it matters most. Thank you.
Next, Malia Brett.
Mayor, council, I am Malia Brett. I live at 6301 Kimbleton Red Wine Road. I'm so grateful to stand here today as a breast cancer survivor of two years, a disease that will... A disease that will claim, will be shared, the effects of it be shared by one and every eight of my friends. Look at this room and kind of do some math. I don't do public math, but y'all can. I also want to thank the fire and police departments for showing the love with their pink shirts and pink badges. That's awesome. I have a dear friend that says, "We rise by lifting others up." On October 23rd, here at City Hall, we're going to do just that, lift each other up. Some friends and I are hosting a pink party for breast cancer survivors, warriors currently in treatment, and families and friends who love them. You probably saw this in the newsletter, and you will see more on social media. This gathering is more than just an event. It's a celebration of courage, hope, faith. It's a chance to share our stories, to lift each other up, and to remind one another that no one walks alone. When I was facing my own battle, I was so encouraged by women in this community. Their words gave me strength, their example gave me encouragement, and I needed all of that on the hardest of days. So many, but among them were my own mother, Elaine Bryant, Jennifer Oxford, Ms. Sharon Frank, and Judy Walker. At this party, we will honor those moments and these people. We will laugh, we may cry, but most of all, we will celebrate life and the powerful sisterhood that unites us. You might win one of these t-shirts like I have on, or some other fun gifts. So please come and support and be a part of this evening of fellowship and encouragement. It's gonna be good stuff. Whether you're newly diagnosed, years into survivorship, or here to support someone you love, you belong in this circle. Thank you, and I look forward to seeing you there.
Next, Christine Sipple.
All right, Christine Sipple. Sorry, I've got a terrible cough, so my voice is very weak. I live at 605 Q Loop, and I hate public speaking. But everything that I wanted to say, I think, pretty much has been covered by a lot of the previous speakers. So I'll just tell you a little story about me and how I ended up here. So born in a very small town in Kentucky. Thought that was a nice community, you know? Raised mostly in the Midwest, again, small communities in Kansas and Nebraska. But there's the side to some small towns that's pretty dark. And it's, you know, guys that get allowed to get by with stuff that isn't right. And I was a victim of that on more occasions than any of you want to hear about right now. So when I left there on purpose to try and find something more inspirational in life, to live for at 15, I never thought I would move back to a small town, ever. And when I came to Atlanta and I was checking out different neighborhoods around, going to Airbnbs, my host said, "You might want to go and check out Chattahoochee Hills. It sounds like it's right up your street." Based on, you know, what I was studying at the time, I was in medical school, you know, getting ready to study family medicine, having a background in culinary medicine, and, you know, believing in healthy living and that we can all change our lives for ourselves. So I came down here and I immediately felt it. And I'm not just talking about going to Saranby and, you know, going through the, you know, the cuteness, the beauty, and, you know, all of that. I took the time, the first time I came down here, to drive all over and see what it was like, and I felt it. So I started a campaign with my family to bring my mom down here, to leave a really, really terrible, toxic situation. in our small town in Nebraska and to give her a sense of peace and safety. And she's never been happier. And I mean, I could cry just thinking about it. But it's meant more to her and to me and to our family to have that community that we've found here. My nephew's come down and he's gotten a start to his career building houses for families who are making their lives here. And it's incredibly meaningful to me. What I've seen in a lot of those small towns is they die. You know, they get stagnant, they don't grow. And I'm not saying that anybody's perfect, but we got to keep trying. Thanks.
Next Brett Davidson. Next Joanelle Coley.
Good evening, Council members. My name is Janelle Coley and I reside at three five six Lowborough Court at the Estates of Cedar Grove. I'm here tonight because for me, what began as a concern about Jeff Lindsay's new construction being built too close to my property exposed a more serious and more potential illegal issue affecting our entire subdivision. After contacting Mayor Tom Reed, who responded effectively and immediately, I learned that the house was not being built according to the approved plans. As a result, a stop work order was issued until the builder provided an updated survey. However, the updated survey that Jeff Lindsay submitted was completed by a separate land surveyor, not the original surveyor, whose plans were recorded with the county and shared with the residents. When this new survey was produced, Jeff Lindsay informed me that my fence was over the property line, which was confusing to me because when I purchased my home, I purchased and my house was appraised on a three point two one acre lot. Yet the Chattahoochee Hills Planning Department informed me that my lot size was only one point eight two acres.
Wow.
And the different land surveyor reported it at one point two four acres. Fulton County records match the appraisal at three point two one acres. But the plat book appears to have major discrepancies such as typos, missing owner signatures and missing dates. This is not an isolated problem to only my home. Many residents are paying taxes on larger lots than what this planning department is saying they actually own due to the incorrect or conflicting property records, which is both misleading and illegal. Homes are being sold at inflated prices based on these inaccurate lot sizes and residents are not being properly informed about property boundaries or future land use. For example, a walking path is planned, is being planned or through, through or behind our homes. But this was never disclosed to the residents. We will be responsible for paying those taxes on this additional land through our HOA, even though this is not part of any part of our usable property. I know I'm almost at time, so I won't keep going further, but I just want to say I need some type of investigation to happen for this. Right now, most of the people in Estates of Cedar Grove houses are upside down with us not even knowing. And I need somebody to tell me what's happening. Thank you.
Next. Next Jacey Sanders.
Good evening, my name is Jacey Sanders. I live at one zero four zero zero Rivertown Road. And I just want to say a quick little thing. So someone said at a city council meeting that there was no diversity in our meetings and no one of procreation age. But I just want to say how wonderfully diverse it is tonight. People from every walk of life, all ages and ethnicities. This is our beautiful community. As a community, I think it is safe to say that we all have one goal, oneness. As someone who owns some acreage, I'm going to be hopeful that someone who cares about my rights to do what I want on my land is put into a position. Someone qualified and dedicated to people, a loud voice that is persistent and true. Be sure that those in positions of power will truly advocate for you in the way that they say they will. Thank you.
Next Angela Addison.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Angela Addison from fifty four fifty one Two Hills Drive in Fair. So first I want to say to the gentleman who thought that the meeting would be better than this. Two council meetings ago, kind of told y'all a storm was brewing. I had no idea it was going to be like this. But the thing about a storm is that after the rain, the sun comes out again. And we kind of need this storm to really kind of uproot some things that should not be taking place in this city. That's just, that's just the bottom line. It's how it happens, you know? But we've heard a lot about what has transpired. I'm not coming up here to rehearse that. I will say that as the person who identified that there were not a lot of people in the room who were of procreation age, my comment was made so that we totally understand that to say that certain statutes do not protect the future just isn't right. The city council and the people who founded this city did a wonderful job laying out how they wanted this city to be, how they wanted it to be for future generations. And all I've seen from some council members are, is just, no, that's wrong. They're not accountable. We need ethics. That's wrong, you know? No. I want to invite each of you to come next year to participate in the comp plan. And I want to speak about diversity. So nice to be able to echo the previous speaker. During this campaign season, I have had the honor of going to various town halls and hosting town halls. One town hall in particular was at the Parks Lady, I had to call it the Parks Lady, I can never remember her name, the Parks Lady House. And I walked in, thank you Diane Wilson, see now I remember. Thank you. And I walked in and I was the only person there who looked like me. And I sat in the front seat. And I could not have felt safer. Because at my first council meeting, Camille came to me to speak. Rodney came to me to speak. My mayor came to me to speak. Not my council member. But because I knew that I was embraced by three people from the council, I felt welcomed. I felt safe. So that day is coming, sir. Just wait for it.
Next, next Dave Noda.
Hello, I'm Dave Noda. I live on Serenby Lane. I have my, I've had my remarks written down. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. First, I want to recognize and thank Tom Reed for his years of service to our little community. Among a long list of superlatives, your legacy will be that you left our community in a far better place than it was when you first entered public service. I'm glad to call you a friend and know that you have many, many more in this room. The second topic tonight, I'm here to support another friend, neighbor and incredibly giving person Judy Walker. I've personally known Judy for seven years. If you know her, what I'm about to say will not come as a surprise. Judy's an amazing artist. Lynn and I have several of her works proudly displayed in our home. You may that, you may know that Judy ran the art gallery. It was a co-op of twenty painters, photographers, writers, jewelers, you name it. One time I was at the gallery and I asked Judy, what was a measure of success for the gallery? Being a business professional, I expected her to say profitability, revenue. But to my great and pleasant surprise, she said her measure of success was the professional growth and development of the individuals in the co-op. Always thinking and caring about others is a hallmark of who she is. Judy is also a writer who has supported other writers in the design and layout of their works. I've seen it and they're amazing. Judy personally helped me in the development of two books I created for my two-year-old grandson. Her insight and guidance was greatly appreciated and helped me bring them across the finish line. My grandson loved them. Judy even helped me research and guide me on how to self-publish these books. Another example of Judy's selfless giving. Judy lives a life of service to her family, friends and those in need where she can. That's who she is. She wouldn't hurt a fly, doesn't have an evil bone in her body. Only good things to say about Judy who has my respect and support forever. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, that was the last of the folks who wanted to speak. We did get a written comment from Christine Gallagher, but we do not say those, but we will put in the record. That was the last one.
Thank you, everybody, for your input tonight. We appreciate that greatly. Moving on to our new business items. First item up is twenty five dash oh four seven, which is council consideration to adopt a council pledge. Ruby, would you like to talk to us about that?
Okay, everyone should have the, a copy of the council pledge. And I heard someone earlier say something about why pledge at this moment. And one reason is we do not have it at the committee, committee. And so we need something. We've been talking about this pledge for a couple of months. Everyone has had the opportunity to review it. One thing on here, the last paragraph is our remain open to learning. And one thing we need to do is remain open to learning and seek help when we need it. We have a GMA that we can go to training. I have went to GMA training. I have over a hundred and twenty hours of training. And you learn from other people how to treat people, how to make your, bring things back to make your city better. And so we need to be more open to training so that we will not make some of the mistakes that we are making. No, we are not perfect. We have been through a lot. But what I would like tonight, if we could just adopt this pledge, at least we'll have something.
And to be clear, for people that were here in the work session, you heard us talking about this. We've been talking about the ethics ordinance for a couple of months now. We are working on one that we will be adopting. That is something that has come in, I've brought it in a couple of times in previous councils and was not taken up by previous councils, but I think that's getting done now. To Ruby's point, this is something interim while we're working on the other. Anybody have any comments they want to make about this?
Yeah, Ruby, I got a question. So we've talked about this before. Do we need to change this now or later? Because there's some language that some of the council people have used that are inappropriate. You know, like the R word from the stage, which is highly offensive. Do we need to change that?
Rick, what do you think at this time?
Change the oath?
We were going to make an amendment, but I think we'll just wait and address that maybe at the, one of the next couple of meetings. So we can, you know, I mentioned this to you before, so let's go ahead. I'm fine with the like it is. Okay.
There's, yeah, I mean, because we're talking about civility, civility items too, to add to the ethics ordinance, so.
Are we putting anything in there about the timing? Like when we reaffirm this? Do we need to do that?
Well, we had talked about a work session that all new council members will include this civility pledge when they take their oath of office. So I'll just get to read more when I swear in the new councilman.
And maybe we should all do it at the next meeting. Right? If we adopt it now. So with that all in mind, if nobody has any other questions, can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty five dash oh four seven, which is a council member pledge that lists a number of commitments that council members are making?
I make a motion that we adopt twenty five dash zero zero four.
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of adoption, please say aye.
Aye.
I heard everybody that stands approved unanimously. Next up is twenty five dash oh four eight, which is the consideration of the appointment of Giff Beaton to the Parks Commission. Diana, would you please come up and tell us quickly again about Giff? Because this is an amazing gift that we're getting here and gift, gift. And I want, I want to hear a little bit about that from you.
Giff Beaton is a resident of our community and we are recommending that he be appointed to the Parks Commission. Giff is an expert on birds and on insects. And I've had the opportunity to go with him in our parks. For example, at Campbellton Park in the spring, when the birds are migrating through, one day, he led a group that identified seventy five different species of birds in just three hours. I've also been with him in Cochrane Mill Park when he was leading a group and also in Hutcheson Ferry Park. We were identifying insects, turning over logs and finding all sorts of interesting things that he knew about. He has written about seven books. I brought some of my favorites. This one is on dragonflies and damble, damsel flies. And evidently at our new Riverlands Park on the river, if you go down to the boat launch site, you are just right over the river. And that's an incredible place to see dragonflies. This is a birding Georgia that he wrote. This one is my favorite bird book, another one about birds in Georgia. And this one, the breeding bird atlas of Georgia. So he's an incredible expert. He was a pilot in the Navy and after that, a pilot for Delta Airlines and now is retired. And so has a little bit more time to, to help us with our Parks Commission. So council, I hope that you will approve his nomination. Thank you.
Thanks Diana. Anybody have any comments I'd like to make or questions? If not, could I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty five dash oh four eight, appointing Giff Beaton to the Parks Commission?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Everybody that's also unanimous. If you have not had this opportunity, I assume most of you probably haven't. And you ever do have the opportunity to go with Giff out into the woods and listen for birds or whatever, do it. He is absolutely amazing. He's one of those people that will hear the sound and say, that's a, whatever it is, redneck, redneck warbler or whatever it is. But it's, he is amazing and what a, what a gift to the, what a wonderful addition to the Parks Commission, Giff Beaton is. Next up is twenty five dash oh five oh, which is council consideration of amending chapter two of the document retention policy. This is a result of some amazing work that the city clerk is doing as she's working on her master's program. And if you would tell us, please Diane, what you would like us to do?
This is to asking for counsel.
This is to asking council's consideration to amend chapter two, administration, section two, point three, document retention. This is to give a little more meat to our document retention portion of our charter with a revised records retention ordinance, records retention policy, and adopting the state of Georgia local government retention schedule.
Thanks, Diane. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt 25-050?
Make a motion to adopt 25-050.
I second it.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Just, just quick, for the, for those who weren't here in the initial discussion during the work session, it should be noted that Ms. White also confirmed a number of questions about retention and destruction of documents according to state standards and did a great job of answering all our questions and assuring us that, that even when a physical record is destroyed, electronic record persists and can be archived and de-archived. So just to clarify that, that that discussion took place during the work session.
Great, thanks. Okay, all those in favor, please of adopting 25-050, the change to the retention policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Heard everyone there, unanimous there. Thanks again, Diane. That's again, keeping us current based on your current learning, so thank you for that. Next up is 25-051, council consideration of a contract award to an HVAC vendor. Darrell, please.
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council, as we discussed in the work session, this is the HVAC for the council chambers. We won't be 100,000 degrees in here tonight. We're awarded, it's going to be 15,998. There's one bid, little less than that, that's a cheaper unit. We're going to go with the train, better quality and better warranty.
And you can confirm that this is not the same company that sold us the microphones, right?
I'm so glad that was not me.
Can I, can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt 25-051?
Motion to adopt 25-051.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor of adopting 25-051 and fixing this infernal HVAC system, please say aye.
Aye.
I heard everybody there, too.
I have to hear this.
Next up is a super happy one. 25-052, council consideration to approve a purchase agreement between the Trust for Public Land and the city to purchase additional land for Campbellton Park. Rick Lindsey, please.
Well, Mayor and Council, I will say that this item on the agenda is probably as happy as the item you just passed, where we get air conditioning and heat. But this item here is about a purchase agreement for about 84 and a half acres of land that will be added to our Campbellton Park. And it is a purchase agreement with the Trust for Public Land. The purchase price is up there, just under $2 million. But the good news is that the Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program is providing almost all of those funds. There is a potential fiscal impact of about $14,000 dealing with some of the professional services that we may, will need, but some of that money may also be covered. So minimal fiscal impact to the city, but if the council approves this, then it looks like we'll get 85 acres roughly added to Campbellton Park.
Awesome. There's been so much work that's gone into these parks. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt 25-052, which is our approval of the purchase agreement for that land?
Make a motion to accept item 25-052.
I second it.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? Not all those in favor of adopting 25-052 and approving that agreement, please say aye. That's also approved unanimously. Thank you very much for that. We are well on our path to parks all along the river and just appreciate so much the people that have been involved in making that happen. Diana Wilson and all of the other folks that have been involved, so. Next up is Mayor and Council comments. And I'm going to start with Ruby. I'm going to start.
Very much.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm going to start with Rodney.
My name's Rodney. Thank everyone for being here. Thank you for sitting through this long meeting. I love to be optimistic. I try my best to have a positive outlook. So I'm going to start tonight with some really, really, really good news. I hate misinformation and I hate intimidation, but I'm going to start by being positive. Most people here know my daughter Riley. She has a disability. She's nonverbal. She's never spoken a word. But she has taught me more than anyone on this planet about life. She's taught me about optimism and the importance of focusing on the positive. So in that spirit, let's start with some good news. Diana Wilson, the whole Parks Commission, it's the gift that keeps on giving. That's the gift that will be here when everyone in this room is in the cemetery. The work you're doing now will keep giving to the city. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. And on other good news, everyone here in this room got to enjoy our city hall becoming more and more ADA compliant. That is a gift we voted on in past. I've visited the city hall on Wednesdays when Brickworks is here and tonight. Paving city hall was made possible by three votes. Councilman Ruby Foster, Councilman Camille Lowe, and myself voted to approve ADA compliance for city hall, to approve repaving of Watkins Road, the same three, approve repaving of Sardis Road, and approve all the paving and crossroads. Those are great gifts to the city. Everyone will get to enjoy those. So I want to thank Councilman Ruby and Councilman Camille for making that a reality. But thank y'all. That goes to show what can happen when we work together, when we share a common goal. Great things can happen. When we're divided, you know, we're going to spin our wheels and I don't, I do not like that. One other thing I want to note, positive, this community newsletter, it takes a team of people, it takes a lot of work, and I love it. I love reading it every week. I mean, every month that it comes out, it takes a lot of volunteers. And this month's issue, if you look on the back page, our city manager wrote a great article. It's on the back page, please don't overlook it. And this season, it will help everyone understand how our city government operates, the roles of the city manager, the role of the mayor, and the role of city council. It's very important to understand that. Robbie, speaking of Robbie, I want to support you and encourage you in every way. I love you being our city manager. You know, the budget kudos from the auditors tonight, again, mentioned you. Thank you for all you do for the city. That brings me to the serious manner that most people are here tonight for. It's drawing the attention of the Atlanta Journal-Constitution. And I hate that. I wish that Atlanta Journal-Constitution was here tonight reporting on the city of Chattahoochee Hills preserving more green space. That's the kind of attention I want. But it's not. It's reporting on the contact, on the conduct of one of our elected city officials. And I hate that, too. I've listened every, I've listened very carefully to every comment tonight. And if you were to see my notes, I wrote notes on everyone that spoke. I take it very seriously and I heard every one loud and clear. I've heard the concern. I share the concern. It's disturbing. We had several people mention trust tonight. It is a betrayal of an elected official's trust to the people he represents. It's betrayal of that trust. I've known Judy Walker for years. I've known Peter, her husband, for years. We were in a storytelling workshop a long time ago and I got to know her. I love Judy. She's a sweet lady. She's 75 years old, not as old as my mom, but she's an elderly lady. What was said about her is inappropriate. Thank you, Judy. I know you're not here, but thank you for what you do for our city. She's a citizen in good standing. She and Tiffany find themselves the targets of threat and intimidation. And listen very carefully. Let's be perfectly clear. This is not a situation they created. This is not a situation they chose to be in. This is not a situation they want to be in. The threats made, the threats made against them are not just words, they're acts of intimidation intended to silence their voice. And tonight, we all understood that's not going to happen. That behavior is an assault on the community values that contradict everything my father, who's sitting right there, has taught me. Thank you, it's an honor to be your son. It has no place in Chattahoochee Hills. We've heard from other residents, we heard from Laurie, other people, said they've been threats of that intimidation or threats made against them. So adding my own name to that list, it was brought up tonight, I'll go ahead and share it. I made a motion to remove funding for a dead-end cul-de-sac to be paved, to remove that funding and allocate it for ADA compliance for city hall. That's when we passed paving of Watkins Road, Sardis Road, and the entire crossroad subdivision. Shortly after that vote, a threat came my way. I didn't really say much about it, but here we are. Threats against Ms. Walker and Ms. Towns are not isolated incidents, it's part of a pattern. And a reporter called, a reporter emailed me the other day from the Atlanta Journal-Constitution. I'm just going to show there's no misinformation, so it's crystal clear. Here's an excerpt of what I told them. "The comments made by Councilman Richie Smith threatening violence, using intimidation against citizens of our town are completely unacceptable." Exclamation point. "They do not reflect who we are as a community and they do not represent the values of Chattahoochee Hills. This pattern has no place in our government. We as a council, as a community, have a duty to ensure public service is safe, respectful, and honorable for everyone. We will not tolerate intimidation. We uphold the values of this city." Many people tonight mentioned respect. We can disagree and be respectful. This is very important. I love our city. I'm glad everyone is here. Thank you so much.
Thanks for everybody for coming tonight. I, I talked a little bit about perspective. We, we opened up talking about the ethics ordinance earlier today during the work session. I was glad to make progress on that and glad to have so many people voice, voice concern for ethics because something like an ethics ordinance, which differs from a pledge in that it's a binding ordinance with a mechanism for redress and so on, I think is extremely important. I think, I think having one, I think, I think much of the upset that everyone is suffering right now wouldn't, wouldn't be present had we adopted an ethics ordinance years ago when it was, when it should have been adopted. So I'm glad people are willing to get on board and work with that now. I found, I found many of the, many of the people's comments moving, and I also found moving Greg Brett's account of the experiences that our, that our public servants go through, particularly in, in rescue public safety, the idea that those, those people are out there. And he spoke to the, the way the different parts of our city interact with one another. He spoke of Raphael and James and Officer Stein's partnership and, and the role of faith and what that means in terms of community and so on. And I really appreciated that and find that, that, that that aspect of, of understanding that work under stress and how, how people come together and that gives me a lot of, a lot of comfort in knowing that the city can weather anything. We can weather some of what these guys have been. I also want to, want to acknowledge that the Darrell and his, and his guys and the, and the work that they've done, District Three, I've had a lot of communication about residents appreciating what they've done for them. I'll be brief, so I'll spare a funny story, but, but Public Works is, as usual, goes above and beyond trying to serve our community. And, and I also want to acknowledge a couple of things, that the idea that the planning commission is getting training is fantastic. I think I support that fully and, and look forward to ongoing partnership with that commission. I hope that the concerns about public safety will be taken up. I'll certainly do my part to take those up and, and, and the zoning complaint by Ms. Janelle Cully, I hope that we can, that we can begin to address the issues that are behind that. One of the things that's sure is that we have such fantastic staff that can deal with that. And on to the question, just returning briefly, because I'm going too long, on to the question of ethics. This is, this is a city that is overdue for an ethics ordinance. And I appreciate the input and the offer of partnership, working, working on an ethics ordinance with Rick Lindsey. And I look forward to the opportunity to, to take in commentary and suggestion as we, as we move forward on that. And I hope that we can bring a draft to vote very soon, perhaps at the next meeting, perhaps at the meeting after, depending on how progress goes. So again, I think, I think an ethics ordinance is something that would go a very long way toward assuring in ordinance and with a mechanism for redress, much of the upset that's going today. Thanks.
Camille?
Yeah. Well, I, I, I want to say, so I do appreciate the work with the ethics ordinance, but I do not need a piece of paper to tell me how to act. It's definitely something we need. And I just wanted to say, Tammy, your words did reach my heart. And so I've been reflecting on this past week. And I am sorry that our town is going through this. I'm sorry for my friends, Judy and Tiffany. They're very brave. And I know how difficult this past week's been for everybody, my friends, people that I know, people that have reached out to me. And I'm sorry for my neighbors, people who have felt unsafe. And I'm proud of how you tonight have come together to support each other. Makes me feel really good about our city and where we can go. And I'm sorry for Judy's husband. I know how angry and protective he is of a fabulous person. And for those who have been verbally attacked, a number of folks stood up tonight. I'm sorry for our city staff for the turmoil at city hall. And I'm sorry for our town, what a mess, what a mess this has been to weed through. It's ugly and it is not who we are. But I want to be clear. When I am mayor, this stops. And please. Leadership is more about just policy. We talk about that a lot. We spend a lot of meetings on policy. But it's how we treat each other, the respect we have for the folks that we serve every single day. Not just when we sit up here once a month at our meeting. We will not intimidate each other. We will not threaten each other and we will treat each other with respect. We look out for each other and that's what we're gonna do. After this election, we'll come together, we'll heal, rebuild trust and work side by side. We've shown we can do it and we'll be able to continue to do that hand in hand. So as we update our comprehensive plan that we heard about tonight and shape the future of Chattahoochee Hills together. There's a lot of power in working together. And as Councilmember Peak said, with respect. Thank you.
Yeah, guys, I appreciate everybody coming out. I too took some notes. I get it. We're all human. But where are we right now as a city? And to answer a question right up front, I'm not dropping out of this race. This is my last opportunity to get my rights back. So let's go over an ethics policy. The truth when it was introduced, it was introduced by Ms. Cyril. There was one question asked at that table. I asked it. I said, what is the punishment for out and out lying to council? Said, there is nothing in there for that. And I made a very simple comment, and you don't have an ethics policy. There's no accountability in that. And at that particular point, nobody else commented. And here we are, talking about it years later. Let's talk about something else, planning, not panicking. Okay, you wanna know where your wedge came in your city? It came at the movie studio. Two years, people filled this place every single day. What did we not do as a council? We did not do due diligence. We did not check financials. After seven or eight people moved, after a permit was given, this individual was broke. So what did we do to learn our lesson? Well, several council people, some on this current council, some from previous councils, brought up certain things to make sure we don't wind up in that situation again. So let's look at the other ones. Let's look at the village. Why do you not have a village? Why did you get a 5-0 vote to turn it down? Why? Because a document appeared over two years later that myself, other citizens, and other council people had asked for. It's called an NOD. It's a notice of decision out of a traffic study. And what the NOD says, and I'm gonna explain some stuff for a few minutes simply because I've been out there for a long time, talking to a lot of you people. There's two things obvious to me that most of us still do not understand. Seventy thirty, people don't understand that at all. When you explain it to them, ask them to recite it, they don't understand when preservation takes place. Preservation takes place when you reach eighty percent of the thirty percent build out. So if you have a sheet of paper and you draw yourself a little line right here, once you reach eighty percent of that thirty-eight, I mean, that thirty percent, that's when preservation takes place. So you can continue to move the goalpost, continue to change rules. So what does that mean with Bucharts Development? We're twenty-seven years into it, we start preserving land? We didn't learn our lesson. I was actually told by the lawyer that stood there that represented Bucharts when we asked for financials, it was not only rude, it was just not necessary. I bet those people that moved over that movie studio sure would have wished we checked that. Me, I take my role very seriously. What I do is I fight with the truth. I fight with documents that I've had to chase down and find for years. Now, so where are we? I mean, we just gave a, a five-year permit to somebody on Creole Road to do an development, cause there's no water. You realize about seventy percent of the cities in this town, I mean, not in this town, but in this state, do not issue permits if you don't have infrastructure based on the hope that one day Fulton County will bring it down or the city of Atlanta, who has told us, there is no water coming. That's the bottom line. Call them yourself. Don't take my word for it. Um, so you wanna know what, what happens while your town's divided is because we don't always get the truth on the table. And I can tell you this much from going door to door, talking to a lot of you people. The truth is, I spent a lot of time calming you down too. Now, Serenby, you just received the traffic study. That's what you received. Guess what? You dump in another eleven hundred houses, you're gonna get eight roundabouts. Buchart starts building, you're gonna get about twenty. Don't take my word for it. Read the document. Right now, what we don't wanna have happen outside of Serenby is to become a congested ten, fifteen-minute drive to wherever we're headed. That's what the people outside are fighting about. Because they've been taken from, not you. And that is the bottom line. So as somebody here who's been taken from, I will tell you, this is my last chance of getting my rights back and yours. As your next mayor, I will get that done. The skill set on that ticket will get that done. You don't have it in this room right now. I told you four or five months ago. You don't have the votes to preserve your town. And as you can see right now, you still don't. So that's what's on the ticket. You either wanna preserve your town or you don't. And we all know that. I don't know how this election is gonna go. But I know a lot of people know me. I know a lot of people know my heart. And I know a lot of people know that I will fight for what's right. And I will not apologize for that. Right is right, wrong is wrong. What I bought and paid for, you don't get to tell me what to do. And I believe somebody else doesn't get to tell you what to do. You move the Buckhead, guess what? You don't need to see the rules. You know they're already there. You move to the Woods, you might check with Greg to see if there's a burn ban. Other than that, that's where we're at. So you wanna know how we got here? That's what lies and deceit breed. You wanna know where the truth is? Do the research yourself. Read the DRI. Because exactly what we're scared of outside of Serenby or any other development is exactly what you're gonna get to deal with. And we don't want it. So if you don't want it, my name's on that ticket. Thank you.
Ruby?
Good evening, everyone. I wanna say thank you for coming out. Uh, to all the speakers tonight, I, I heard your voice. And I know what fear and uncomfortable look like and feel like. I wanna say as leaders, we must do the right thing all the time. We must remember why we ran and who we served. It's not about getting evil. We must stay focused. And to the staff, thank you so much for working with me. I know some time, uh, with a lot of stuff coming up. I appreciate all your help. And Greg, and to the police department, my heart goes out to all the people because I know y'all see a lot. Not only that you see it here, you have to bring it home. And I do pray for you. I just wanna let you know that. And now I'm gonna just talk about some things coming up. We have our Fall Festival, which is November the eighth. Every Monday night, we do dance, um, uh, line dancing here in this room. Uh, on November, I mean, October the nineteenth, we would be doing a women network, trying to bring women's in the community together. They can share their business, um, and everything. So I would be putting that out. And for breast cancer, I wore my pink. I, I know what it's like. I've been there. And I just wanna say, my heart goes out to you as well. And the crossroads subdivision, I'm very happy that, you know, it's on the way with the paving and totally excited about the Cedar Grove Community Center. Thank you, guys, and y'all have a great night.
I wanna thank everybody that came and spoke tonight too, and I wanna say that I heard every single one of you. And on behalf of the city, I apologize for the way that this community's been treated. I do. It's not what this community's about. I think back to the meeting at the Baptist Children's Home when about five hundred of us were in a room, talking about whether or not we should become a city. And all the hands went up, right? This community worked hard to make that happen. Highest percentage vote in the area for the new cities. And it was tough at the beginning, right? And I remember after that moment of joy where everybody came together, that first campaign. And the sad reality is campaigns are ugly. And people get ugly in them and we see it. I mean, you know, cars vandalized, my daughters were flipped off walking down the sidewalk, you know, they're just the stories that I could tell about that first campaign. Um, and then afterward, we had that first comp plan update and hundreds of people in the community came together again and spoke with one voice about what we wanted this community to be. You know, you hear stories about what is and what isn't and all of that. I was there in the room. Most of the people telling those stories were not in the room. A lot of you people were, right? We know better. We know better. The community came together around what we're doing here and we're still fighting for that same message in this community. Now, you know, comp plan updates happen and we absolutely come together again and we make updates based on where the community's head is now. Getting ready to roll into another one. And I've been talking to a lot of people in this room that are for what's going on and some that wanna change some things and saying, come and participate. Come and participate. Because when everybody comes together, this community does amazing things, right? Be wise in this election. I'll say that. Bring us together. This community does great things when we come together. I think about our parks, our Parks Commission, our fire department, the team that we've built here, the successes that we've built here. That's all based on things where the community has come together. Respect everybody in this room. Make this a better place, right? Thank you for being here. Thank you for caring about this place. Thank you for caring. We will see you next month and celebrate this community's successes. Thanks for coming. Can I get a motion in a second to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn? Exactly.
All those in favor of adjourn, please say aye.
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 Stand adjourned at eight forty-five. Sorry.
Who made the motion? Who seconded?
Sure.